Bob Nelson.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Brian Richards.
Here.
Allison Ritterbusch.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a forum. First item I'd ask if you would look at your agendas and I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Look at that.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve the agenda. Are there any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. And again, I remind the council, if there is a conflict of interest on any item on the agenda, please notify the entire council prior to voting. First item is the approval of the minutes. You have the minutes from the March 18th council meeting in your packages. I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 18th council meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council minutes from March 18th. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have before you claims for bills in between of $90,418.91. I would accept a motion to approve those bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve bills in between for $90,418.91.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bills in between are approved. You have listed current claims, and we do have a change to the current claims. We'll be asking for a motion to approve current claims for $180,058.13. And the item that was changed is on page 10. Fall River Health Service, there's a decrease in that amount. We usually get a discount that was originally not applied, and Misty caught that and was able to get, save us some money there. So, the total is $180,058.13. I'd ask for a motion to approve those current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims for $180,058.13.
It's been moved and seconded to approve current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Current claims are approved. Normally, we do have credit card charges at this council meeting. We're not able to get those summarized, so those will be brought before the council, before the address meeting. At this time, I would ask Ed Jensen to come forward with a bunch of honries that he's got out there with him, his guard, and accept a very, very important award that he just received at the state air nautics convention. And I'd ask Bill Lukens to join me. One of the things that we've been blessed here in Hot Springs is to have an airport, the Civilian General Aviation Airport. We're called a medium-sized general aviation airport. And this is the second time that I, as mayor, have had the opportunity to honor this group. Now, when Ed called and said that he had won the award, my first reaction was, Ed, you're going to be really hard to live with. And the first thing that Ed did was to say, well, you know, it wasn't just me that made this happen. He said, we have a wonderful advisory board at our airport, and we've got several of those members here. And I think it was, it's important that we honor the work that you do, volunteer to help give advice and help us make the right decisions concerning our airport. But Ed, you're the one that makes things happen, and we really appreciate it. And again, this is a big honor, again, to repeat in 2018. And we really want to thank you for the hard work that you put in in making our airport what it is. We've got big plans. We need money. We need, we need mechanics. We need, we need mining. We need a whole bunch of things. But by the way, if we, when we get that, that airport's going to grow. It's a popular place. And so, I'd like to go ahead and again, present that to you. I know you had that presented to you in front of all your compadres at the aviation conference, aeronautical conference. So, congratulations. Do you have your speech prepared?
No. I had one before and I dropped all the cards. Like I said, if it wasn't for these guys, local pilots, pilots flying in, unheard of people in the city, the city council, the airport wouldn't be getting to where it is. It's a grown airport. People read the paper, and we see that we have the helium balloons out there this year. I might have them convinced to build a hangar, a commercial hangar out there, hopefully. So, try to draw business in. I don't want to talk too much, but I dislike the last time. Well, I got this two years ago. Came in the top three last year and wanted to get in this year. Except before, I said to the city and the county, I said, how do you like me now?
We like you.
I'd also like to introduce Bill Lukens, who's our council member that's on the advisory board. And Bill, did you have any comments that you'd like to add?
I just want to say, it's been, it's been interesting, and it's been a joy to sit on the airport advisory committee because this group of individuals here really does have a passion. And it's not just a passion, it's an educated passion. We have an engineering firm that we're required to have to help us with our capital improvement plan. But these guys have a history in general aviation, so they really add a whole new level of... Their nonsense detectors are highly calibrated, so the service we get from the engineering firm can be validated by them. They know what we need. They, I believe they truly know what our community airport needs. And then, when things come around like the, and I hope I say it right, the family fly-in fun day on June 1st, the amount of planning and precision that's going into that event is really going to be a plus for the community. So, this whole team really is doing a great job for our airport and for our community. So, thank you, guys.
Is there anyone on the committee that has a speech prepared?
I don't have a speech per se, but I've been around Hot Springs for a while, and I just want to say the plus things about the airport. Of course, we have the SEAT airplane, which is the fire airplane, which actually protects, I would say, 100-mile radius around here during fire season. And they chose Hot Springs as a base, and we're very fortunate for that. And then, of course, we have a lot of life flights out of this airport, and we can't measure what it takes to save a life. So, that's an important function. And then, we also have the parachute club, and I can't imagine anybody jumping out of a good airplane, but they do it all the time. And then, we have the glider clubs. That's an addition out there. So, people drive by and say, there's no activity at the airport, but there's a lot of activity there. So, those four functions, besides the tourists coming and going, it's a pretty good place to be. And under Ed's leadership, it's the best place. I think it's the best airport in the state. We know the grass strip is. So, Ed's done a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And again, congratulations again to all of you, and particularly Ed. Thank you for all your hard work.
Congrats, sir.
Those are the fun things.
Oh, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay, next on our agenda is communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? Seeing none, moving on. We do have personnel actions. And I guess, to begin with, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve personnel actions, all except item N, item BB, and item CC. We'll address item BB and CC later, but item N, we've asked to be removed. So, I would accept a motion to approve all items and personnel actions except BB, CC, and N.
I'd make a motion to approve all personnel actions, list A through II, and deleting N, BB, and CC.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those personnel actions as a motion. Are there any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like, I'd ask that you would consider a corrected wage amount for items BB and CC. Southern Hills Golf Course custodian, the initial amount should be under BB, $10.45. And item CC, the custodian wage would be raised on 1st of April to $10.70. I would ask for a motion to make those changes in those two items.
I'll make a motion to approve personal action BB with a change to the hourly wage from $10.70 to $10.45 an hour. And personal action CC with a change in the wage per hour from $10.95 per hour to $10.70 per hour.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those personnel actions. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, in the agenda, the committee reports administrative and finance. Bob?
Administrative finance met today at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Bill, Kim Misty, Jason and Josh from the golf course, and Tom with a presence, a couple old business owners to update you on. We've been talking about reviewing the city fees. Misty's been reviewing all the city ordinances and other documents, the reference fees, and has already found over 200 instances of a fee for some public service. This is an issue that will take time to get some, take some time to get a handle on, but we will continue the discussion. She was showing us the list of all the items that she had found. She just scrolled through a page, scrolled through a page, got well over 200. So, there's a lot to look at there. The Olstead land swap, that's to swap a couple of their oil lots on the old water fill station and the lot by the armory. Kim and Don are still working on some final changes to that proposed land swap. Hopefully, that proposal will be back, back before the council for a final vote soon. Some new items. Chief Close talked with Mayor Cotty about two police grants for two body cameras and two radar units. This grant is an 80-20 grant with the city paying a 20% portion. This will be forwarded to public safety for further discussion. Misty reviewed her financial reports with us that are in your packets tonight. We also spoke with Brian Rita Meyer, correct, who said? From Black Hills Technology about replacing the city's aging firewalls. Replacing these firewalls is a proactive measure to ensure continued security of the city's computer systems with the recent problems created by email spam, if folks remember, a couple months ago. The city needs to stay ahead of the bad guys. The replacement cost is $4,800. The funding will come from the contingency fund, and it had been financed as recommending replacement of firewalls. Jason and Josh from the golf course spoke with the committee about the new rubber tractor excavator the golf course will be purchasing. They did their shopping due diligence, and the final cost will be less than the amount that we approved within our budget for 2019. We also discussed the, some possible changes to Chapter 14B, Parks and Recreation, and all, speak a little more to that. That's on the agenda for tonight. The mayor had asked for that to be tabled for further discussion. So, I think we'll all get into what we had to talk about with that ordinance when it actually comes up for a vote. Tom and Oz from the Evans Plunge talked with the committee about the plunge's concern over employee staffing. After April 15th, the plunge will lose 14 of their 13 lifeguards.
Four?
Four. Yeah, that's the plunge. So, they're going to lose all 14 of their 13 lifeguards. The plunge will lose four of their 13 lifeguards. Currently, there isn't a headland board or aquatics director. The plunge has been actively trying to hire staff and is looking for other ways to fill their vacancies. Some suggestions are using banners at the plunge to announce the vacancies, offering extra pay for certifications, and offering sign-on bonuses. The wellness aquatics director position previously approved by the council has still not been filled. Recommendation was made to eliminate the wellness portion of the job and see if the position could be filled with just the aquatics director responsibilities. The plunge will continue to look at ways to reduce the staff shortage at Evans Plunge. Next meeting will be May 6th, 1:00 at City Hall.
Thank you, Bob. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
The Airport Advisory Committee met Friday, March 29th, at 8:00 a.m. at the airport. Present were Ed Jensen, Larry Vetterman, Steve Hill, Danny and Myrna Lewis, Shane Miller, Donald Connor, and myself. Also there from the city were Tracy Bastian, Scott Soggy, Don Johnson, and Gordon Brooks was there as a guest. Members discussed the Airport of the Year Award and the process of selection. And just as an interesting note, those awards are based on audits and inspection that are made by the State Department of Transportation, aeronautical division. So, it's not just some haphazard subjective opinions. It is based on objective audit findings. Members also discussed the various improvements that have been made at the airport over the past many years, so a lot of them attributable to Ed's activities. You heard him talk about, we have some of the best grass in the state. Our grass runway is literally considered probably the best in the state. And so, pilots that, especially the glider folks, really like the grass runway. Ed mentioned that he talked to the KLJ engineering rep at the, at the conference at Winter, and that there is a chance that the 10-unit tee hangars as part of our capital improvement plan may become a reality within the next year or so, as far as the grant that would enable that. So, our portion of that would have to be integrated into our 2020 budget planning and beyond. We continued to discuss the internal airport improvement plan and potential items for the 2020 budget. And again, these are outside of the formal capital improvement plan that KLJ Engineering provides assistance with. Various members of the committee expressed appreciation of the city and the community and their support for general aviation and the Hot Springs Airport, and seeing the need for maintaining the high quality of the Hot Springs Airport. Larry Vetterman did bring up the suggestion that we install veterans parking signs at the airport and possibly other places in the city, since we do consider ourselves a veterans town. The team is continuing to do their planning for the June 1 flight. I have a hard time with this. Family Fly-In Fun Day. And again, Don Johnson with the library director is working with the airport committee. One of the things they're doing is that anyone that signs up for the summer reading program, they are informing those folks of the fly-in day, since the theme of the summer reading program is, has kind of a space theme this year. So, they're, they're really working close with the airport. They're also providing some of the free giveaways that Don has access to. She's providing, because they're, one of the activities they're looking at this year on June 1 is a ping pong ball drop, where they'll drop like 150 numbered ping pong balls. And so, the kids will run out and grab the ping pong balls, and they can redeem their ping pong ball for a little gift. Not to be confused with the flower drop, which will be for ages eight to four, not 65. We'll let that one go again. Gordon Brooks provided an update on the proposed compass rose. They've priced out the cost of paint for that is $1,167.25. The committee's still talking about that, and they will be soliciting donations for the cost of the paint and any of the expenses that the 99s would incur for coming out and painting that. So, there'll be no cost to the city associated with that. Right now, if they go ahead with that, they're looking at doing a 30-foot in diameter compass rose. They were looking at putting it in front of the old hangar, but since that's where the firefighting aircraft typically parks, with the potential of dripping fire retardant on it, that may not be the best place for a really decorative compass rose. So, they're working at that. And there is a chance, if they can get everything pulled together, the rose will be painted and in place before the June 1 date. So, we're hopeful for that. Scott Soggy was present and provided a draft for the amendment for the airport zoning ordinance. And the meeting adjourned at 9:30, and the next meeting will be Thursday, April 25th, at 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
Great. Thank you. And did get a report from Mr. today that they've got almost three quarters of that money raised on compass rows. So, great. Well on the way. Custer Fall River Waste Management District, Ron?
Next meeting will be the 11th of May, 7:00 p.m. at Wheelers Center.
Okay, thank you. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Harleen, is not here tonight. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
Next meeting will be April 11th at noon at Evans Plunge.
Parks, Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Marty?
Next Parks meeting is tomorrow, April 2nd, at 3:00 p.m. at Wheelers Center.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Allison?
Our last meeting was canceled since they had no new business, so this month's meeting will be April 17th, 7:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Bill?
Public Safety met Wednesday, March 20th, at 1:00 p.m. at City Hall. Present were Mayor Cotty, myself, Bob Nelson, Chief Close, Kim, and County Emergency Manager, Frank Maynard. Under Old Business, we had an item looking into whether or not we could utilize Golden West, their cable channel, to place emergency information there. Kim has worked with Golden West and found that per South Dakota Emergency Alert System statutes, only certain designated positions can cause an emergency message to be placed on that service with Golden West. In our case, that designated position is the Fall River County Emergency Manager. So, if we have a situation that would require such a notification, we would simply work through Frank Maynard's office to accomplish that. Another Old Business, the committee reviewed 22 items on the, from the pre-disaster risk management plan. And we, we went through each of those 22 identified risks and provided an initial risk rating. And by that, we, we made an estimation of the severity and frequency of those risks to come up with an initial risk number. In future meetings, we'll continue to build out more detailed mitigation priority plans. Under New Business, Chief Close provided a summary of departmental activities for the past month. Both of the new vehicles that were in the budget have been received and are being outfitted. And as the weather is improving, you'll be seeing one of our reserve officers more and more on bicycle patrol. He really enjoys the bicycles, and I think that's extremely helpful, especially in our downtown area. Again, Fall River County Emergency Manager Frank Maynard was present to discuss the Code Red system. This is the public notification system that's been discussed in the papers earlier. It's a countywide system that should be up and running, we hope, this month. As the system can send general information as well as emergency information directly to cell phones, the Public Safety Committee certainly encourages all residents to take advantage of this service, as it is provided by the Fall River County Office of Emergency Management. And we really feel that the Code Red system is a very robust system that will probably alleviate our need to utilize, instead of utilizing something like the Golden West ticker. This is a system that will also be able to communicate to tourists, because that's one of our biggest concerns, especially during the summers. We have such a transient, non-resident population that would normally be difficult to communicate severe weather or potential fire or flooding information. And this Code Red system has that capability of communicating with those cell phones. Our meeting adjourned at 4:00 p.m., and our next meeting will be Wednesday, April 17th, at 2:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thanks, Bill. Public Works, Bob and Ray?
Public Works met on March 26th at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Ray, Tracy, Scott, and myself were present. We talked about Prairie Hills Transit on March 25th. Mayor Cotty, Scott, and myself met with the executive director from Prairie Hills Transit and South Dakota Department of Transportation to review possible sites for the bus barn. Two sites that we looked at were the old demolition derby area and the landfill. demolition derby at the landfill had the sewer plant. Sewer plant land poses a problem because the site is lower than the existing sewer plant and would require a lift station. Tracy will put together a list of costs to provide sewer and water to each location. The city will need to get real estate values for each location. We also talked about storm drain, air car quests. Last year, when we were having our severe rains, car quests actually experienced two of them. events of flooding, actually inside the building, pretty significant amounts because of the way that the water is flowing down in that area. So Tracy's going to put together some plans to fix the storm drain before our spring rains start. Oldstead Land Swap, we also talked about that and mentioned in Admin Finance that Kim and Dawn will be working on the final wording for that. Under New Business, we talked about the PUD ordinance that's on your agenda tonight. Some additional items regarding that ordinance for your consideration tonight. We also had a business owner that talked with us, they're distributing their current water in Sewerville. Their current bill shows they used 81,600 gallons of water in State Fields and Ira. The city water department responded to the owner's concern that they had a faulty meter and replaced the meter with another meter just to make sure the meter wasn't malfunctioning. And the replacement meter behaved the same as the original meter. The business owner took some pictures of the meter with their private phone and will share those photos with the committee. Until the situation is resolved, the owner will not be charged for the suspected overage and this discussion will continue until April 9th, Public Works meeting. Ray, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add.
All right. The next Public Works meeting will be April 9th, 3 o'clock, at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty?
Next Shedco meeting will be Friday, April 19th at noon at Winter Circle.
Okay, thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, the golf course is open, open to carts. And there've been some tractor issues and we've encouraged Jason and to get those issues repaired prior to the season starting. So other than that, we'll be getting the Golf Course Advisory Committee together in April to start looking over how the season is going. The Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Next meeting will be the 9th of April, 7:00 p.m. At Hospital Volunteer Fire Department.
Comprehensive Plan Coordinator, Sam?
Nothing to report.
Moving on in our agenda, you have before you ordinance 1198. And that's revising Chapter 27A that will include the planned unit development to allow for the development of a subdivision with mixed types of structures. And as we make that motion tonight, I would ask that the word residence be struck out and structures or uses be added. And as examples, the apartment duplexes, single-family homes, but also that could include if it is a development, things such as clubhouses, that sort of thing that fits in with the type of subdivision that is being developed. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1198.
Mayor Cotte?
Yes.
Can you say again what you would like to replace residents?
Okay, replace resident with structures or uses.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1198 revising Chapter 27A zoning ordinance to include planned unit developments to allow for development of subdivisions with mixed types of structures or uses, apartment duplexes, single-family homes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass the first reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
On letter B under number one, initial is spelled wrong. So that needs to be corrected. Also on that, under three, and C under minimal amendments, I was questioning whether we should, in a lot of places, we say that it's going to come back with any amendments to council. This one only says to the zoning commission. And so I thought we may need to put, unless we're just allowing the zoning commission to make some amendments, and I'm assuming we'd want it back to council. So I just put a question mark.
Major minor amendments?
Right, right. And so if they go back to the zoning commission to do the revision, you want the zoning commission to be able to make that amendment without it coming back through?
Yes. And then it would just be part of your report. So that's how we get back to the council of what we want to change.
Could you give Kim a microphone so that everyone can hear, please?
The intent was that the Planning and Zoning Commission could act administratively and then during the monthly reports or that you have after the Planning and Zoning meeting, that's when you can say, oh, we did a minimal amendment to this PUD section, under this section. And that's how the entire council would be notified for that one. But the minimal descriptions are, it's laid out pretty simply, but we did feel that the Planning and Zoning Commission could do some administrative things on their own.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Bob and Ray, what was the recommendation, would be the recommendation from the Public Works?
The recommendation is to approve the suggested amendment to the ordinance.
Okay. Hearing no further questions or comments, I would ask for a roll call vote. And we have taken a note on the misspelling and that will be corrected. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ray Echathy?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that first reading is approved. Moving on to New Business, we had a tabled item from the last meeting. I would accept a motion to approve waiving 13 park application fees for the Farmers Market Group. And listed as the dates, as you see in the motion, I would ask for that motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve waiving 13 park application fees for the Farmers Market Group for the 2019 Farmers Market scheduled for July 12th, 19th, and 26th, August 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, September 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, and possibly October 4th.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to waive those park application fees. Are there any discussion?
Just a minute, please. Thank you.
Okay, look like we got an important text in there.
It was in relation to the question we had with the Farmers Group this afternoon about whether they were a nonprofit or not. Kim, would you read?
Sure.
Please.
Rajni's out of town right now, she would be with us. So I asked her via text, I said, is the Farmers Market a nonprofit organization or kind of a club? And she said, yes, we are a nonprofit. And then I asked, do you know if the farmers pay sales tax? And she said, the market overall pays, pays sales tax. So for their advertising and then each group that has any sales will pay sales tax. The only one, I think she was indicating was whenever they have other groups in like the gardeners' clubs, stuff like that, that they don't. Because they might have some small things for sale, but that's, they don't. But any of the people that are selling farmers wear, do.
Okay, so I heard that correctly, the farmers that sell their produce?
Produce do.
Do pay sales tax? Okay. Okay.
Right.
Are there any other questions or comments?
What is the application fee, 20 dollars? And that would have been for each, each day?
I had mentioned in Admin Finance that we'd probably get back into this when it came up for discussion. The mayor had asked for it to be, talk about in Admin Finance because there's some possible suggested changes to the parks ordinance. My hope was that we could make Mary and Barb's job at City Hall a little easier by making some changes to the ordinance to talk about nonprofits and how we would deal with those and what fees might apply and what fees wouldn't apply. And as we got into the discussion, I think it's fair to say that one person's definition of nonprofit is not necessarily another person's definition of nonprofit. I wasn't envisioning that we would use the IRS definition of nonprofit. But I think it's fair that, I'm necessarily looking at the IRS, but how do you define what is and isn't a nonprofit? And the other part for me that comes into this is unintended consequences. When we made changes to the animal ordinance, we thought we were doing a good thing in how we were going to handle the euthanization of dogs. That was the specific reason behind that. And it came back and it ended up just getting a lot crazier than we thought it was going to with the changes that we've made to the ordinance. We tried to anticipate everything and we think we got it, and then you find out six months later, no, we'd missed something. So we didn't recommend any changes to the ordinance. We talked about in each case is, as it may be, that the people that are looking for these types of fees to be waived to come in front of the council, make their case, and let the council decide. Getting into changing ordinances based on where you're at a particular point in time may not work somewhere down the road. Did I capture that right? Did I misrepresent any of it? We spent a while talking about this. Should we make a change to the ordinance or should we make it, just let the council determine on each individual basis?
I think what you've relayed, Bob, seeing is that, I believe, accurately is what I remembered, it's, and again, the more we looked at subverbage, you could probably have written just in that discussion, three or four pages describing what we tried to explain in three lines. And so it became evident very quickly that a change to the ordinance would not help the process. And part of helping the process is again, helping Mary and Barb out front because they're the ones that deal with this potentially on a day-to-day basis. Or at least, that's where the question may be initiated. So where it stands now, we're, us doing, what we're doing right now is probably the right answer for now. It's because there is not a simple way to write it that would make their job any easier.
And I think we ought to, as best we can, help nonprofits and bring these types of things to the community. We certainly see benefits outside of just the event itself. Now, there was concern about if the city is waiving a $20 fee, are those folks paying taxes? Is somehow some of the money potentially coming back? And that was Kim's response from Rajni, that they are paying taxes. Hope that we could make it a little clearer in ordinance. Government, making things clear in ordinances sometimes is very, very difficult.
Yeah, are there any other comments? What is the recommendation then from the Admin Finance Committee?
I'm hesitating because I don't recall that we actually came up with a recommendation. I was back and forth on it and I'm in favor of waiving the fees.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for anybody else.
The only thing that I'm looking at is just that from here on, that we have consistency regarding the nonprofits and whoever is, you know, I think most of the nonprofits that have come to us are also paying sales tax as well. And so if we're going to do it, that we look at a consistent kind of across the board how we're going to waive these fees that are being asked.
And I think you just identified one of the things we're looking at. This council can make that commitment. This council is going to change in June.
Yeah.
What does that council do going forward?
Sure.
The hope was in an ordinance, you could take care of that. Nice, that's the next council to change the ordinance. So the feeling was, put the responsibility on each council, let them make a call and explain why, why they feel that way.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the roll, please?
Ray Echathy?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries and those fees will be waived. Also have a motion to set a public hearing on the 15th of April at 7:10 to act on an application for a temporary alcoholic beverage license from the Mammoth Site to be used at their facility during the secrets of the sinkhole event on the 26th of April. I'd ask for a motion to set that public hearing.
Make a motion to set a public hearing on 4/8/19 at 7:10 to act on the application for a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from the Mammoth Site to be used at 1800 U.S. Highway 18 bypass Mammoth Site during the secrets of the sinkhole event on 4/26.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set this public hearing. Are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is set. Have a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from Winter Circle to be used at 801 South Sixth Street for the Ashley Trent Wedding on June 8th. I'd accept a motion to approve that beverage license.
Make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from CSE Doing Businesses Winter Circle to be used at 801 South Sixth Street for the Ashley Trent Wedding on 6/8/19.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve this temporary alcoholic beverage license. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also have a possible motion to approve travel request for Lori Sherard, our safety coordinator, to attend the South Dakota West River Safety Day in Rapid on the 23rd of April.
Make the motion to approve travel request for Lori Sherard, safety coordinator, to attend the South Dakota West River Safety Day in Rapid City on April 23rd, 2019.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that travel request. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have before you another travel request from Misty Summers Walton, our finance officer and Mary Hardy, to attend the South Dakota Municipal League Finance Officer School in Pier. And this would be from June 6th through June 14th.
Make a motion to approve the travel request from Misty Summers Walton, finance officer and Mary Hardy, administrative assistant to attend 2019.
officer and Mary Hardy, administrative assistant, to attend 2019 South Dakota Municipal League Finance Officer School in Pier, South Dakota, 6/11 through 6/14, 2019.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that travel request. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I would give the second. I'm sorry, who's that you got? Thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a travel request from Scott Sogi, our development coordinator, to attend a ICC Fire and Smoke Protection Features Seminar in Rapid, and that's on April 9.
Make a motion to approve travel request from Scott Sogi, development coordinator, to attend the ICC Fire and Smoke Protection Features Seminar in Rapid City on April 9, 2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that travel request. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on in the agenda. Misty, our finance officer, you could give your report, please.
Thank you. We did review the financial reports in your memo at the Admin Finance meeting, and it brought to the attention of the group the profit-loss summary by fund page. If you go to the second page of that, the red number there, the grand total for the city gain or loss for the year, year-to-date, is $416,841 in your red. I often tell you, don't worry about those numbers, but I also want you to look at that red number and remember that's why we have money in the bank and don't spend all of the dollars we have. We budget well. We make a good plan, and we follow that plan and review these numbers throughout the year, and we do anticipate that that number will change as we move into our summer months and our revenue increases. But when you look at the balances that you get in the cash balance reports, just remember that it takes that much to function the city just for three months in the slow time of year. We've had no big projects. We've built no roads. We've put in no partial parallel taxiways. We haven't built any bridges yet this year. So just to run the city for the first three months, we're $416,000 short. So that's why we have money in the bank. That's why we put money aside. That's why we don't spend every dollar we have. For the first time this month included in your financial reports, I also put a list of the CDs. Since this council voted to invest the money we're saving primarily for our road project, but since we voted to put that into CDs, I thought it would be helpful for you to see that listing as well instead of it all lumped together like you get in the investment report. So if you like having that, let me know. If you don't care, I can stop doing it, or maybe just do it once every, maybe a couple times a year. We are, if there's any questions about those investment reports, those cash balance reports or any of that, anytime, please don't hesitate to ask. I said I give it to you because I want you to look at it and understand it. I know it's a lot, but it's important. We are going to the district meeting on Wednesday. We have six people from our community representing Hot Springs, and I'm excited about that. It's going to be a great time. It's in Keystone. My favorite part is the legislative update from Yvonne Taylor. She never disappoints. But also the ability to connect or reconnect with legislators and other people like us that do what we do in communities in our district. It's a real good time, and I'm looking forward to it. Last Tuesday, the 26th, was the due date for nominating petitions. We had three petitions returned, and we have five open seats, so there will be no 2019 municipal election. Craig Romi was the sole respondent for Ward 1, David Burris for Ward 2, and Ron Richards for the one-year term in Ward 3. Come July, we'll need to appoint another Ward 3 council member and a Ward 4 council member. Since appointments are only good till the next municipal election, I'm already looking forward to 2020, and we're going to have seven open seats during that election period. I have nothing new to report regarding the comprehensive wage study or the ordinance classification projects. I sent a very large file of information to the Weston Group on the 14th of March and sent the signed agreement on the 20th. They did confirm receipt of the information, so I'm sure they're working through it at this time. I plan to follow up with them by the 10th of April if I haven't heard anything. American Legal Publishing is working on our legal and editorial report, which they said would take around 60 days. We're expecting to see something by the end of April. They did recommend that we postpone any in-depth reviews until after we receive the legal report. But if you are interested in looking at the draft manuscript, just stop by City Hall and ask. There is just one of them, so you'll have to stop by to look at it. I'm not sure how I ever got the annual report ready by the first meeting in March, and I'm so thankful that the law changed last year to push back the reporting requirement to the first meeting in May. I've made it through all of the analytics, roll forwards, reconciliations, and accruals, and right now, Kadel Thorsten, who maintains the software that houses our tax asset detail or our capital assets, has the additions and deletions, and I'm waiting for them to send me the report back with the depreciation so I can complete those related entries and the capital asset roll forwards, and then I'll prepare my work on your annual statement for the first meeting in May. We did sit down, Kim, Karen and I sat down with our Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield agent for our annual renewal meeting and review on March 7. In 2019, in May, during our renewal, we'll be seeing a 12.66% increase in health insurance rates. Our single employee premium, which is paid 100% by the city for our eligible employees, is going from $704 a month to $793 a month. That equates to about $4.95 an hour for a full-time, 40-hour-week employee in additional pay just for that benefit. We did review and compare our current grandfather plan to other plans offered, and the benefits and coverage provided to our employees are much better in our current plan than any other plans, and any savings we saw were very, very small. So the choice to stay with the same was made. Both our health insurance and our liability, property, and casualty insurance through South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance, we did not estimate a large enough increase for the increases we saw this year. You approved the SDPAA bill in your claims. We budgeted about $101,000, and the bill was $105,000. So you may be, you will be seeing some requests for some additional appropriations to cover those expenses. On February 28, Dan Eggers with Discovery Systems was at City Hall reviewing our 2018 payroll data and completing the workers' compensation payroll audits. We prepay for workers' compensation coverage at the beginning of each year based on payroll estimates generated during budgeting times. Once the year's done, an auditor comes in and reviews our actual payrolls and classifications. Since the coverage is provided for the time employees at work and not a wage amount, they make deductions for hours paid but not work, like sick, holiday, and vacation hours, and for hours paid in excess of the one-to-one times your rate of pay, like overtime, holiday pay, our new call-out and inclement weather pay. We prepare payroll financial spreadsheets that calculate these deductions, and those are submitted to Discovery Systems. They generate a subsequent report that's then sent to the workers' compensation fund, and they calculate and issue a refund based on the adjustments. This year, we're anticipating refund of approximately $4,000. There's some additional information about the audit summary report listed there, and I'd be happy to show it to you if anybody's interested in seeing it. I did a review this morning of the municipal sales tax, and we're still showing a modest increase over last year's collection at this time. It's about 8%. The interesting thing is that is just in the general sales tax, the gross receipts tax, or what was called the BB&amp;B tax, or the liquor lodging and dining tax is not seeing an increase at all. It's kind of flat compared to last year. So that 8% increase is just in our general sales and use tax. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator, Kim?
I don't have a whole lot to report. I've been MIA for a little bit this past couple weeks. Couple things that I did want to mention though specifically was about our Airport of the Year Award. I couldn't be more proud of our group for getting that again. One of the things, and I think I agree 100% with everything that Mayor Cotty and Councilman Lukens said about the reasons why, you know, we got this and all the things we need to be proud of. One of the things that wasn't mentioned though that I really have to take my hat off to is Ed Jenkins and his exemplary customer service. He's on-call 24/7/365. He will come out with a smile on his face and fix things. The intangibles that don't even count on an audit report are things like a brand-new airport manager was hired in Custer and needed to get up to speed. He spent half a day there out of his own time and asked for nothing but just make sure that you let my boss know. He's just that kind of ambassador to anybody who comes to the airport or anybody that comes to Hot Springs that he has a touch with, and I think that that has a large part to do with why, again, two years now that we've gotten the Airport of the Year. So I just wanted to make a call-out for Ed on that one. And other than that, I'm just going to pass on to you, Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Again, that's a great honor to, shows a consistency to win that award two of the last three years and be in the top three, the one year that we didn't win it. So, great. Also, just want to say kudos to our city maintenance crews. I've received several compliments throughout this past spring on the snow removal. The fact that our crews get out early, they've been on top of the storms that we've had, and that's greatly appreciated. And Kim, I ask that you pass that on to Billy and the group. One of the things that we had last week was a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and a group of retail and downtown businesses. And the purpose of that meeting was to begin discussing how the road closure and construction, and I'm not saying road closure, the road construction would take place, and how we let the world know that Hot Springs is still open during that construction season. It was a good meeting. I gave a summary of what the status was of the road construction, and in particular stressed the suspension sidewalk that we intend to make a part of that. Again, there were a lot of questions that we were able to answer and get the communication out there. I was encouraged that the retail business owners enthusiastic about the plans that we have, and certainly we need that support as we go forward. We also looked at how we would engage to mitigate the construction issue and getting people to know that we're open downtown, and also that we can get people moved to and from motels and so forth downtown. And one issue that seemed to come to the forefront was the idea of having a trolley. And of course, that's something that we as a city are not going to be able to provide, but we would encourage and hope that an entrepreneur, even prior to the construction season, maybe even next summer or this summer, could locate and begin operating a trolley and get that transportation going. The nice thing about something like that is, once you get people downtown like that, they have to wait for the ride, the trolley to come back before they get back to their motel. So we get to keep them in our business district a little longer. But it was a very positive meeting. I appreciate those that attended and the questions that were asked. And hopefully, we can keep that communication door open and work together with our business, our chamber, to gain an opportunity to make sure people know that Hot Springs is open. I also want to say thanks, Marty, to Shetko for the leaning forward. Obviously, we are facing an issue in Hot Springs with sales tax revenue, with the closing of ShopCo. And Shetko has been working ahead of the game to see if we can find a business that would utilize that excellent space that ShopCo will be vacating. And finally, I just want to talk a little bit about safety. We've had two very serious accidents recently at the gateways to our city. Not this past weekend, but the weekend before, at Maverick Junction, a semi hit a car. And then this past weekend, we had on Highway 18 coming into Hot Springs, fatal accident. I would encourage the community to obviously be safe, but I also want to make sure that we as a council and as a community understand the sacrifice that our police officers made. Our two, we had two of our finest that were first on the scene of the accident this past weekend. And having experienced in the military, losing someone and coming on a scene like that, it's, it's something that you remember the rest of your life. And I just want to ensure that our police officers know that we support them. I've contacted an individual that is a grief counselor and is available to counsel those officers. And sometimes those memories don't really manifest in their fullest until sometime later. So I just want to bring that up of the sacrifice that they make and ask to keep our police force to protect our city in your prayers. With that said, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.